Called a regular Dixie County Commission meeting to order October 8th, 2015, Lee Sampson's flag flew.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda with the additions of consider amending county policy section 605 regarding weapons. Two, consider resolution appointing deputy district coroner. Three, consider approving temporary special event permit from Ham's quarry. And four, approve salaries and insurance allowance for 2016 budget as recommended. And I'd like to ask for 10 minutes of executive session for non-elected personnel.
I move that we approve the amended agenda.
I'll second it.
Been moved in second. Any other discussion? Not all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Consent agenda, minutes of the October 1st work session and regular meeting, payroll of $259,121.81, funding expenditures of $251,806.86, and wire payments of utilities of $10,121.61.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second it. It's been moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Lynn, committee commissioner comments, committee reports?
About the only thing is, the Kansas Association of Counties, I serve on that board, we have a teleconference that we're gonna, you know, participate tomorrow morning, and it has to do with legislative issues with the other board members. They also did ask me to serve on a committee to review the bylaws and just update and see if we needed any changes, so I'll probably be participating in that also. And I think they want to try to have something ready for the conference, the first part of November, if there are any changes or recommendations. That's all I have.
I did attend, excuse me, attend the Chisholm Trail Festivals activities on Saturday, and about the, had very good events going on there that day, and like I say, it was, I think it's for the younger children that enjoy the history part of how things used to, how we used to have to do things, is very educational for them. Also, I might mention, mentioned last week that fall harvest is still going on, and a lot of activities with equipment, things on the road, and just making people aware that things aren't very busy right now, so that's all.
Article in the paper, the legislature, their implement wisdom, is doing an audit of the lobbyists, they singled out KAC and the League of Municipalities, thinking that the way I interpreted, I didn't read the whole article, that they want to know how much money we're spending for lobbyists. It was $500,000 was spent this year for lobbyists, and they don't, I'm interpreting things, probably reading things I shouldn't, but they feel like that we shouldn't be spending that money, taxpayer money, to lobby. And I think we all agree that KAC does an excellent job for us, lobbying for us, because we have no idea what's happening in legislature, and even when they're down there, we don't know what's going on and stuff. I know the school boards face the same situation, they've done, they have trouble with the Kansas Association of School Boards, you know, lobbying for them, so, but it's, I think they're trying to, I took a ethics class, and they're straw dog, they're attacking somebody when they don't want to be attacked themselves, but that's my personal opinion. Had a department head, elected officials meeting this morning, about to get information. That's all I had. There was nothing on the computer for the commission?
One thing I might add on your comment on the lobbying efforts, because the cities, you know, as well as the counties have people to do that, but for example, this last session, so much was happening after regular hours where it didn't even come out of committee, and to have someone that has an understanding of the issues, what's going on, to try to communicate that and get that information, I mean, it's helpful, and it's, would be nearly impossible for individual commissioners to be on there, trying to speak on behalf of their counties.
No, I agree totally, I mean...
Well, I guess I look at lobbyists, you might say some are good and some are bad, but I still think they're there for a purpose to educate the, our representatives down there, and if they are giving them good factual information, I guess, as a legislative person, I guess I would be willing, you know, to accept information, and I feel like KAC does an excellent job of just presenting the facts and try to educate them, so I, like I say, I don't know why they would be coming down on us, so.
I don't either, but they are. We have no presentation petitions and proclamations. Brad, you want to give your report?
Yes, sir. Well, you, in your package, you've got your big financial reports, talking, going over that, they look, they look fine, nothing jumps out at us, we do have, of course, the unemployment health department, any balance to end, but at the end of the year, as we have posted, as we discussed, he's gonna transfer some over to that. We should also have a report for you to write off some of those extremely old debts that were never gonna, never gonna, gonna receive, probably do that in December. On the sales tax report, you know, I know we've heard that the state's 41 being behind again in the month, that tickets again is again holding strong, month of July, ours came in at 103.9, which is almost 4,000 more than the previous month, so, on regular sales tax, of course, that also increased our root and bridge special sales tax by several thousand as well, so, commend, I would commend the local, local spenders and local economic efforts, that are obviously starting to pay off for whatever reason, I can't explain it, but I'm really glad to see, see that stay up there, so. And then the individual department reports, our balances are where we expect, we see nothing that concerns the real eye on that, so, if you have any questions on that, I'll certainly try to answer them. The next item in my head was an update on the Heritage Trust Fund grant, I've been working on that, I spent most of my week on that, actually, this is the Wilson Bridge project, been communicating with Patrick Zoller, who is kind of the ringleader at the Historical Society of Topeka, and he had sent me a request Monday or so, Monday or Tuesday, they wanted some photographs, and a map, and a description of what our intention was to do with this project, relocate a bridge, they would require it obviously to be over water, although they said a dry stream bed would also be sufficient, so we would have to create some type of a, an illusional stream bed there, and so I put together a plan, I actually took Chancy down yesterday morning, we used the drone, flew some aerial, took some aerial photographs of that, that depicted the Heritage Center and land, and then we, I had GIS put together a really neat map for me to show the local properties, which I thought was very valuable to show Eisenhower Center and the National Grand, or the Graham Museum, and Old Appleton Town, and Heritage Center in close proximity to that five-star district, if you will, and wanting to put, you know, this, this relic in that area, so, I submitted all that to him last night, by email, haven't heard back, or if I have, it's on my email there, but we have to be, in his words, we have to be pre-approved to be able to submit an application, since it's kind of a little off the cuff, you know, out of the ordinary type project, so, I'm hoping what I submitted gains the preapproval. I did send a message to Clark and Audrey, I updated them, where we were asking them for letters of support, if we do get approved, I'll provide you a letter of support to review and sign, and to be able to send in with the actual application, which could be towards the end of this month, so, which is rapidly coming, so.
Clark and Audrey, I mean, I've never heard anything, either one of them, what they want to do.
Yeah, I, you know, last I communicated with them, told them, you know, I gave them a copy of the bridge report that we'd gotten from the inspections, and told them that, you know, it looked to me like probably relocating it, if we wanted something like that, was really the only realistic thing that we had to try and, you know, doing something...
If we wanted to save it.
Yeah, if we wanted to save it. And they both responded back, so, appreciate your efforts, sounds good, and that's, that's about the last I'd heard from them, so. I've been communicating with Jeff Sheets this week, too, and, and kind of told him what we were doing, emailed him, he's seen my way back, and so, I was gonna stop down and talk to him yesterday, when Chancy and I went down there to do the flyover real quick, by the bus from Arrington, and about 20 cars pulled in about the same time we did, with about 300 kids. And I said, ah, he just became very busy, so I didn't get a chance to get in face-to-face with him, but, and I don't know that I need to at this point, but, just to let you know, we are working on it, and we'll see if we can, we can pull something out, you know, it's kind of late in the process, if nothing else, there's always next year, the bridge has been there for 111 years, so, I guess one more, it's kind of urgent, isn't it? The Sheriff's Department wanted to let you know that they had arranged an extradition from Texas for an inmate, to the total of $761, an expedition company, to bring one back, that would be taken from diversion. You had, remember, your red tab is a suggested policy change from Diane, it has to do with weapons in the workplace, and weapons on, that are carried by employees, and as I think you're aware, the law changed the last session, and this is, this is the update that would coincide with the new state statute that's come out, that basically doesn't refer to concealed weapons or anything anymore, it's just dangerous weapons, so, it really simplifies it tremendously, and our recommendation would be to remove 605A completely, which is one that we updated mid-last year, and just insert, or amend 605, which has to do with workplace civility, with the two paragraphs on the back, backside of that, so, it simplifies it in a way, and I think does the same thing, and that's, that's what our, the legal counsel from K-Camp has recommended, and what the other county or HR organizations are going with, so. This has been an expensive week for fuel, both diesel and unleaded came due this week, we were running low, we did take diesel fuel bids early in the week, Robson's bid was a $1.97, and then KC was a $1.99 for diesel, and then just this morning, our E-10, our unleaded, no lead, we had to take bids on that, and contrary to what your sheet says, that's a, I'll say it's a typo, Robson was a $1.98 a gallon, and KC was $2.01, so, Robson got those bids this week on, and normally they don't, they don't come quite that close together, but, not much we can do about it, so, but anyway, that's, that's, was done this week. You also have in your packet a, it's on your packet, I guess, but Craig has it, it's a resolution to update the approved deputy district coroner listing, the hospital, or Dr. Shun's office contacted me just yesterday, and they have a new physician coming in, Dr. Shun apparently had some medical procedure done, so he's kind of out of pocket right now, so they were kind of on top of it, because the deputies have been covering his, his calls, and, so anyhow, we have an additional doctor that is being placed on there that will start a memorial on November 1st, and then we've removed Dr. Biggs, who obviously has since retired, so, to keep that cut up when we get down to resolutions. In your packet, under the yellow tab, you have a sheet that is a little bit interesting, everybody hears about the Affordable Care Act, we have learned, and I say we, Diane has learned, that under the Affordable Care Act, there is a substantial amount of additional paperwork that needs to be done, both by, as a relation to your health insurance, both by the insurance carrier and by the employers, and I won't go through all this verbatim, but under the blue side, under their heading 1095B, the insurance carrier is required to submit a substantial amount of additional information to the federal government, and us as employers, under 1094C, have to transmit this information to the IRS as well, and to federal government, to ensure that everybody has health insurance, because if you don't have the proper amount of health insurance, or you don't provide it, then you get punished and penalized. It's gonna take quite a bit of time on our part, we'll get it done, it's just another task at the end of the week, or the end of the day, but the point being is, what the process, or what I wanted to bring to light, is what are the processes of working with CIC, all counties are, not just Dickinson County, all of them, all of the 70 or 80 that I believe are customers of theirs, getting a report done, so that we can do it in the computer, and it will spit the information out, I know that sounds simple, but, in essence, in a, provide the information out to send to the IRS, that is not completed yet, they're working on it this year, we'll probably have to do it manually, but at any rate, there's probably gonna be a little additional cost to CIC, sure, with all their customers to do that, I'd be surprised if they'll do it for free, but it is an additional cost that we're gonna have to bear, because of the Affordable Care Act, so, at any rate, I just wanted to let you know about that, and let you know that the paperwork requirements as a result of some of these changes of the federal government continue to mount, and every time they make a change, it's better for worse, it seems like we get saddled with a substantial amount of additional paperwork to deal with, so. And then, we talked a little bit before the meeting, but I'm also working with, working on the Detroit Enterprise Combination Project, for lack of a better term, we've received word from Rural Development, KDHE, that they are giving their blessing to us, combining systems and sharing resources with the City of Enterprise and the Detroit Sura District, and just got that information yesterday, so it's very preliminary, but I'll be working with those parties involved in the Detroit Sura Board to come up with a draft agreement, and working with Doug on that, and to get that compiled, and put some meetings together, and I know Enterprise is interested in moving as fast as possible, because their lagoons are out of, their current system, I don't know that it's a lagoon, I don't know what it's called, but it's out of compliance, so they need to do something as soon as possible. I think as long as the state knows they're working on something, they're fine, but, so we'll be working with them, and trying to get two problems taken care of, one for Enterprise and one for us as well, because we just don't have enough material going in there, as you well know, so, that's all I've got.
You skipped over the review resolution for the coroner. Do you want to discuss that?
The one on...
Review resolution for updating list to approve deputy coroners for county, or that...
He covered that, I think, on Dr. Biggs retiring, and...
Oh, I didn't, God, I must have been, we're doing something else.
The daydream, I know.
I could do it again.
No, I'm sorry, I missed it.
I'll do the, I'll do the abbreviated version. We're just updating, adding a new doctor that starts the memorial on November 1st, and taking Dr. Biggs off, so.
I can be removed chairman at any time.
Well, you had to be nervous, because I thought, I thought I covered it.
Okay. Doug, you're here.
I am. I'd like to have, if it, if the board grants it, I'd like to have five minutes of executive session at the end of the docket for attorney-client privileged information, I would need county administrator, and of course, me, with the board.
Yep, no problem.
That's all I have.
And is that separate from what you were wanting to do?
Yes, yeah.
So we have, we have another executive session?
Right, yeah. This will be attorney-client, the other will be non-elected personnel.
Okay.
Notice in communication, notices in communications. Got a Kansas Department of Revenue, statistical and procedural compliance per review, determined substantial compliance within the county appraisers office pursuant to KAS 794445. It's, the effort of your county appraisal, appraisal staff to, staff to complete the appraisal cycle is satisfactory, or to be commended. And we have a clerk of district court, the county clerk fees, diversion fees, reimbursement, and then we have a, a special breakdown of our budget for county commission. Let's pass them over to Barb, I'm gonna look at it, Vern, Lynn. Introduction to Consider Resolutions, we have resolution number, 100815, resolution concerning the sale of cereal malt beverages. What is, what can change, Brad, or you want?
Well, I think the changes are just fees, right?
Pretty much.
Yeah, going from...
We have to buy $20...
Twenty-five additions.
...dollars. The processing fees for...
Yeah.
...bid handling, which hasn't been, hasn't been amended or changed for, for a long, you know, forever, with the descriptions.
Section 5, addition of $25 fee that must be paid to the Director of Alcohol Beverage Control to the Department of Revenue, each applicant, or any renewal therefor, must, for a retail license to sell cereal malt beverages for the consumption, on license premise shall be accompanied by a fee of $60 for a total of $85. And then, section C is, in addition, a $25 fee to the Director of Alcohol Beverage, the Department of Revenue, the initial applicant, and annual fee to sell only cereal malt beverages in original container, unopened containers, and not for consumption on the premise, shall be $50 for a total of $75.
I think the resolution mirrors the previous resolution that was in place, with the exception of the just changes of fees.
Just changes the amount.
Yeah.
Have a motion to approve resolution 10815.
I so moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any other discussion? Not all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
You need, you need two copies signed, you're like...
Yeah, go ahead.
How do you not have that?
I gave it to you.
I don't think I lost it.
Because I put the number on it.
Ah, yes, I found it. Excuse me, today. Resolution 10815A, a resolution establishing appointment of assistant district, deputy district coroner of Dixon County, set forth in KSA 22A 26E, which authorized the appointment of a district deputy district coroner within the H. Dusel District, and where, as Dr. Jim Jenkins is currently the district coroner for the H. Dusel District of Kansas, having been appointed by the Yarri County Commission, and Dr. Jenkins has been appointed, Doug Shurn, to serve in the capacity of deputy district coroner to Dixon County, Kansas. The Dixon County Commissioner hereby authorized to approve and affirm the appointment of the following individuals to act as district coroners of Dixon County, Kansas, Dr. Amanda Brax, Dr. William Short, Dr. Keith Blaster, Dr. Brian Holmes, Dr. John Mosher, and Dr. Wendy Dinkle. Have a motion to approve resolution 11815.
I move that we approve this resolution.
I'll second it.
And then, is it actually, does it have a letter after it or something, since it's our second resolution?
A, yeah, I see it, yeah.
A.
Any other discussion? If not, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Other business? Consider approval of temporary special event permit for Ham Quarry. Craig, you want to?
Yes, Ham Quarry has applied for a special temporary permit to locate, possibly locate a, an asphalt plant on their facility, yeah, on Woodbine. My understanding, they have one of the paving companies has just requested to place a plant in that area for a cane up front there from Highway 77, so, as, in compliance with our zoning regulations, to do that, it wouldn't be covered under their condition release permit, they would just need a special permit, so, as Ham's always does, they follow the rules, they have contacted Dustin and, and applied for that permit, so, we see nothing detrimental, everything's, looks fine, so, it's our recommendation to be approved, so...
I'd move that we grant this temporary special permit for Ham Quarry.
I'll second it.
Been moved in second. Any other discussion? If not, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next is a consider approval of salary insurance allowance for 2016 budget as recommended. All move that we approve the county paying an additional 50% of the employee's 2016 health insurance premium increases with the funding to come from the 2% average increase to line item approved by the 2016 budget.
Second.
Been moved in second.
In doing that, basically, we had had that budget item for the 2%, so we're deducting that from that amount, so it's not, new money we're approving, we're just, had that unexpected increase for the insurance, and this helps offset a little bit of it on a pre-tax basis.
And I was talking to Brad earlier, and it will be something that we've, in my opinion, we've committed ourselves to, to keep it at this rate, too, I mean, it's not just a one-time deal. Is that, both of you understood that, or...
Additional increases later.
Well, I mean, we're gonna, yeah.
If you're gonna take a motion to change it...
Well, I mean, if you want to change it, yeah.
At a later time, yeah, but for now, this is just like a good course of action.
Okay.
Well, yeah, it's just that we have to consider that when we do give the raises, that if there isn't, like this year, they're not gonna get the 2% increase because of some of this money...
We're using some of it.
Funnel this money into...
Essentially, they're kind of getting it, but they're getting it through a different way.
Yeah, they're getting it tactic then, through, yeah. If no other discussion, motion to approve it. I move.
I'll second it.
Been moved in second. Any other discussion? If not, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
On behalf of the employees, I would express our appreciation, because that allows me to walk...
And, and I think we talked about having it in service.
I'll, I'll go through the in-service and my presentation, so...
Frank, I guess there, we have also the policy change on the firearm, and we need to do that before we're done the sessions.
That's right.
You got another one?
Yeah.
Now, that's not resolution, though, is it? It's just...
Just a policy motion.
Yeah, motion to make policy change on the weapons in the courthouse.
So, so just what did this change compared to what we had before?
What we have currently is on the front of that sheet, where it says... What we have currently is on the front of that sheet where it says six oh five A, and it relieves six oh five A, which, which actually refers to firearms and concealed carry and all that stuff. And since the state changed, they, they changed the law that says we can't prohibit specifically employees concealed carry, we're changing that to amend, removing that and putting a policy in place that says that if you're not carrying weapons or dangerous weapons. So it's a much shorter policy and a lot clearer and it coincides with the new state statute.
I'd move that we adopt this new policy.
I'll second. Been moved in second. Any other discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Now, we're done with that. Need a motion to go into executive session for attorney-client privilege for five minutes, starting at eleven thirty-two. I'll move it.
Second.
Been moved in second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Doug said that was going to include our administrator.
Yes.
As well as those three.
There won't be any action taken. If you want to stay around, that's fine. Nope. I guarantee it. Yeah, Barb should be knocking at the door there.
I'd move that we return to regular session. I'd move that we return to regular session.
I'll second it.
Been moved in second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Ten minutes executive session for non-elected personnel, eleven thirty-nine. Just three commissioners present. I'll move, make that motion.
I'll second it.
Been moved in second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried.
I'd move that we return to regular session.
I'll second it.
Been moved in second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Entertaining motion to adjourn.
I'd move we adjourn.
Second.
I thought maybe you were going to take some action. Been moved in second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. We stand adjourned.
Get the people there.